Planning Advisory Commission Meeting, Monday, December 14th, 2020. I call this meeting to order. And our first item of business will be our roll call and introductions. I will call the roll. Commissioner Hentges?
Here.
Commissioner Hartman?
Here.
Commissioner Huber?
Aye.
Is he going to be available digitally? I thought he was going to be. Commissioner Huber? Commissioner Huber? We'll check back at this point. Commissioner Robbie?
Here.
Commissioner Johnson?
Here.
Commissioner Von Haag?
Here.
Commissioner Watson?
Here.
Hey, our next item, also present this evening is, in the chamber here with us is Brad Davis, our Planning Manager, Greg Wagner, our Senior Planner, Marty Schmitz, our zoning administrator. I've seen him here this evening. I know that Barb Simonson, Deputy Clerk to the Board, is here somewhere. And I don't know, is Commissioner Wolf here?
He's on the call.
Okay. He's here digitally. Okay, very good. At this time, I will look to the Board to approve the Planning Commission meetings from November 9th. The Planning Advisory Commission has had an opportunity to review the meeting notes. Are there any additions, corrections, or deletions to the minutes as printed? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes from the November 9th meeting.
A vote.
A motion by Commissioner Watson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Robbie. Any discussion? Hearing none, I will call for a vote. All, I will do all of our votes this evening by roll. Commissioner Hartman?
Aye.
Commissioner Huber? Still not present. Commissioner Robbie?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Von Haag? Yes. Commissioner Watson?
Here.
You forgot.
Does that mean?
Aye.
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 Commissioner Hentges?
Aye.
Is Commissioner Huber here at this time?
Shows he's still muted.
Okay. Okay, the minutes are approved. Six with one member either not present or not voting, Commissioner Huber. Okay, our next item is our consent agenda. Now, the consent agenda, all items listed are considered by the Planning Commission to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a Planning Commission Board member or a member of the public so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda to be considered separately. We have two items this evening. Item 3-1 is Public Hearing, Safety Signs, CUP Amendment Number 2020-078. It's a request to amend existing conditional use permit to allow for leasing of industrial space to other tenants. The location is Section 1, Newmarket Township, current zoning is I-1. Would anyone like to have that removed from the consent agenda? Okay, three and none. We'll keep that on the consent agenda. The second item on the consent agenda is Sota Electic is the applicant. It's number 2020-070. Request for a conditional use permit to operate an electrical contracting business as a home extended business in the agricultural preservation density district. Location is Section 30, Bell Plain Township, current zoning is A-3. Would anyone like to have that removed from the consent agenda? Okay, so these two items will be considered and will be approved with consent agenda approval. I entertain a motion now at this time to approve the consent agenda as printed.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda items.
I have a motion by Commissioner Robbie. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Hentges. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I will call for a vote by roll. And we'll start with Commissioner Robbie.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Von Haag? Yes. Commissioner Watson?
Yes.
Commissioner Hentges?
Yes.
Commissioner Hartman?
Yes.
Commissioner Huber? Still apparently having technical difficulties there. Consent agenda is approved with six voting yes. At this time, we will go to our first public hearing. It's Flood Plain Ordinance Update. It's a request to consider updates to the Scott County Zoning Ordinance Number 3, Chapter 1 through 7, Definitions, and Chapter 71, Flood Plain District. And this evening, Mr. Greg Wagner will be, our Senior Planner, will be making the staff presentation. Good evening, Mr. Wagner.
Good evening, Mr. Chair Commissioners. So we have the YouTube up and running now, so hopefully people are able to watch it. Oh, yeah, Commissioner.
Should we turn the screens on?
Should be down to the bottom right.
See. Thank you.
Got them?
No. I don't know if this one's hooked up. This one different?
Bottom right. Little button. There we go.
Perfect, thank you.
Lots of technical difficulties, so. So, Mr. Chair Commissioners, on the screen is a letter that was in your packet from the Federal Emergency Management Agency, FEMA. As some of you probably know, FEMA puts out floodplain maps as part of a nationwide program, the National Flood Insurance Program. This program is intended to help landowners that are in flood-prone areas. And the maps that FEMA currently has on record were last updated back in 1987. So we had heard a number of years ago that FEMA and the various states in Minnesota, it's Minnesota DNR, was working with FEMA to update their flood insurance rate maps, which are, again, used by lenders, insurance companies, homeowners, when they're in a flood-prone area to identify whether they would qualify for flood insurance. So the letter up on the screen here was received by the county back in November. As noted, we previously had received notification back in August that the new information on the maps was available. The county, again, was aware of this for some time. We knew that FEMA and the DNR had been working on updating these maps. And county staff actually participated in some of the map work about 10 years ago. So this has been a long time coming. With this letter addressed to Commissioner Beer and the Board of Commissioners, the county was directed that we, the maps and information were now available and that we needed to update our ordinance to comply with the new map information. And the date that we were given, the county has to take action on an amendment to our ordinance by February 15th of 2021. The new maps, the new map date, I should say, that will be adopted by FEMA will be February 12th, 2021. So we have to update our ordinance in order to stay compliant with the National Flood Insurance Rate Program so that residents of Scott County can continue to participate. If the county failed to adopt the new floodplain map, it would mean that those individuals in the county in flood-prone areas would no longer qualify for meeting criteria for flood insurance. So this is something that was mandated by FEMA and the Minnesota DNR. So what I'm displaying here is a proposed draft floodplain overlay map. Some of you may be familiar with where the floodplains are. Obviously, the major rivers and creeks in Scott County, so the Minnesota River, Sand Creek, Raven Stream, et cetera. What this map identifies then would be the different flood districts that we're proposing to create according to the data that was supplied by FEMA. So this is information on how FEMA and the Minnesota DNR classify the floodplain areas in Scott County. So the darker blue would be what's considered the floodway. The lighter blue is considered flood fringe, so that's outside of the main floodway. And then the green areas, so many of our lakes in the county are considered a general floodplain district. Along with this map, data was provided to the county that does give elevations in certain areas of the county so that when residents call, we do have elevation information that we can provide them because generally they need to know whether their property or their home would be in the floodplain, and that determines whether they need flood insurance. So we would have that updated data to now provide them. As indicated, the data that's currently out there was last updated in 1987. So pretty old information. So what we're proposing tonight is an amendment to two chapters. The first amendment was Exhibit A in your packet, which is really Chapter 1, zoning The underlying information, or the underlying language here, is information that is being proposed to be added to the ordinance, and the strike through is information that is being taken out. We received a model shoreline ordinance from the Minnesota DNR, excuse me, model floodplain ordinance from the Minnesota DNR. It was very, very similar to what we already had in ordinance. Probably 95% of what they recommended, we already had. The only minor changes were some definitions. So you can see, we had a definition of conditional use, but the recommended language had a different definition of conditional use. And the reason we are adopting theirs and taking out ours is we compared all the definitions and we feel, in a lot of cases, their definitions are better than what we had. We have a section in, so there's a lot of definitions that we're adding here. We didn't have a definition for what development was. There's an updated definition on flood, definitions on the flood fringe, and then we have floodplain-related definitions where we now are adding definitions for base flood, base flood elevation. The reason we're putting these in Chapter 1 versus the floodplain chapter is that we feel these definitions can benefit the entire zoning ordinance, not just that chapter. So we feel these, a lot of these definitions are very good and we need to use them in other places. The one new section that the county is adding that we didn't have before in the floodplain is something called manufactured home. We have a definition for manufactured dwelling, but the manufactured home definition that FEMA is recommending is a little different than ours. We are proposing to keep our definition for manufactured dwelling, but also add manufactured home to the flood-related definitions. I know it's a little confusing, but, so the manufactured home definition, it's mandated by FEMA initially. We were not going to include it, but when we sent our model ordinance back to the DNR, they said, no, you need to include this definition. It's mandated by FEMA. So we're not taking ours out, we're just including both of them in there. So you can see, there's four pages of stuff that we're proposing to add. We're really not taking anything away that we feel is going to be harmful to anybody in the county as far as changing a definition. And so then Exhibit B, as indicated, we had about 95% of what was recommended here. Really, it was just putting the recommended language into our ordinance format. And the only new section, so I'm scrolling through pretty fast here. Section 71-11 is this new, I just talked about the manufactured homes. This is a new section that we did not have before, manufactured homes and recreational vehicles. So FEMA is recommending we add language to our floodplain chapter that deals specifically with what they term manufactured homes and recreational vehicles. So again, this would be really the only new section that we're adding. Otherwise, everything else is very similar to what we have, and it's not a significant change from our current ordinance. The whole bulk of what we're proposing here, the main reason that this is coming before you, is that we need to adopt that new map, the new map for February 12th, 2021, or the residents of the county that are in those flood areas will no longer qualify for the insurance program. So nothing significant from a staff standpoint that we see that's, everything in here is hopefully pretty straightforward. A lot of information, a lot of technical terms. I would try and answer any questions that you would have, but again, staff is recommending approval. We did send this to the townships and kind of explain to them in email why we are doing this or why we have to do this. I did receive an email back from Spring Lake and Helena Township that they had no concerns and were fully supportive of the request. The other townships, we didn't really ask for a recommendation. We said, if you want to send one, great, but the county has to move forward with this amendment before February. So if there are any questions, I'll try and answer them as best I can.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Johnson?
On page 61 of 88, 71-7-3 talks about conditional uses. And then page 70 of 88, 71-12-4 talks about conditional uses. Why is that there twice?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Johnson, I can tell you that this was very confusing to me when I put it together as an exhibit here. So this is the DNR model floodplain ordinance. So we essentially copied what they had into our ordinance, but as I scroll through here, their numbering system is very different. They have sections where we have, you know, 71 whatever. What I found going through here is they did a lot of referencing back to other locations in the chapter. So I did note the same thing, why are they saying this twice? But the way they put their model together, they established a section and then part of that section referenced back another section. So it seems like there was some duplication in there, but they would talk about conditional uses under one, like the flood fringe area, and then there's conditional uses under the floodway area. So you see a lot of duplication, what it seems like, but it's under different areas. So they would have a CUP under the flood fringe or under the floodway. So they just, seems like they listed it multiple times, but they referenced things in different sections. So it's a roundabout answer, but there's a reason for why they did it.
Mr. Chairman, I just have one more question.
Commissioner Johnson?
On that map you put up?
Yep.
Aren't they taking a lot for granted when they say it's been adopted February 12th, 2021?
We put that on there, but we did note this is a draft map. So our zoning, so it's hard to see probably on the screen, but we had to add the floodplain layer to our zoning map. So really faded out in the background, or you can see the yellow here on the east side of the county, which is our rural residential district. So the zoning map was August 18th, 2020. The date that FEMA will officially approve the new floodplain maps will be February 12th of 2021. So we put that date on there in anticipation. Until that date, this map will be draft, so.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, I've got a question for you, Greg. Kind of more of a general question about, two years ago or so, I think it was Minneapolis Tribune, had an article about some of the Jordan residents, and there was a number of residents that were interviewed as far as being in a, in a, this proposed flood, or being in this floodplain and the high expense for insurance. I guess my, as I say, a general question, being that the November 9th letter says there are no significant changes, there really isn't any relief for these individuals, or basically nothing's changing. Is that, as a general question, is that the way I'm hearing or reading this?
Well, Commissioner Robbie, or Mr. Chair Commissioner Robbie, there's no changes significantly to the language of the ordinance. We're, you know, there's the new definitions that I talked about, so there's some differences there and some updated language. But what's really changing is the map and the map data. So, you know, as I said, the current map, the current FEMA panels are dated 1987, so 34 years old. So this new map and new map data is based on more current data and newer studies. Not everywhere in the county, though, there are, so if you look at a flood map, the flood insurance rate maps, you'll see different zones. Zone A is like considered the general 100-year flood elevation, but it's not determined. So they'll draw a line on a map saying, okay, along this creek or whatever, we know there's a floodplain, we believe it's this, so we'll call that Zone A. There's another zone called AE, which means that an elevation has actually been determined. And that's where I said early on, we have a lot of that data now where if an elevation has been determined for a 100-year flood event, we have those numbers that we can give to people. It's the Zone A, and I don't know specifically the areas of Jordan, but a lot of, a lot of the county is still in Zone A where we don't have the elevation. They generally say, here's the floodplain. We get this a lot, like around, Cedar Lake's a good example. We know an elevation around Cedar Lake, but people look at the flood map and it says like Zone A. So mortgage company, for instance, they'll look at that map and say, well, no, your property's in the floodplain. Well, then they'll call the county, do you have an elevation for my property? And we can give them that information. And then what they do is they go and make an application to FEMA, and it's called a letter of map amendment. So they'll take any data they can get and they'll say, well, the county gave us this information that our flood elevation is this and our house is, you know, up here, so we're outside the floodplain. So they can submit that letter of map amendment to FEMA and then they'll get out. So I think a lot of the county falls under that. I don't know specifically with Jordan, but people do have an avenue if they don't believe they're in the floodplain, even though the map would show it, they can go through a process to get their property out.
And that's sort of the loma, through the county then?
Well, we can assist them, we can't submit it for them. If we have the data, we can give it to them, or our natural resource engineer and department, they can help those people, say, okay, here's what you need to do. They may need to hire a surveyor, they may need to hire an engineer, but a lot of times we can at least point them in the right direction.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Just a comment on your, on your question, Commissioner Robbie. When I lived on Prior Lake, my house was in that situation, and there was 1.8 feet from the foundation, because I knew the house was out of the flood zone by elevation, but that was in it and I still had to have the insurance because it's
It's a small portion.
A small portion, it's just dedicated entirely by the elevation of it. And I do have a question about the flood maps. Did you overlay these and look at the difference from 1987 to 2020? I mean, because that's a pretty significant time period. And do any analysis on that and what's happening?
No, Mr. Chair Commissioners, at this point, we did not. So we were notified back in August that the information was ready, and doing the ordinance update with the language was, took a lot of time and effort. And then getting this data into a format that we could put it on a map to make some sense of it took some time as well. And we had to do it, I think, by early November so we could submit it to the DNR. It might be an exercise that we do now that we are at the hearing point and now, okay, here's the, we have the information that we're proposing to you and to the county board. So we certainly probably could do that just to see what's changing, but we have not done that yet.
Right. At some point, since you have both data sets now, then you can kind of look and see what's happening, and I don't know if that even could be translated into a visual document.
We do, we do have both floodplain layers on the county GIS site, so you could go to a property. Right now, the current information or the 1987 stuff is on there. It's called effective floodplain. And then this new data can sit on, it's another layer called preliminary. So they're both on there, so you could click them on and off if you wanted to look at a specific property, but
I was also thinking from a planning sense of looking at what trends are occurring and what's happening as we, for zoning and planning direction, as we're looking at, you know, and just another area of overlay that we have. Just a comment on that. Any other questions right now? Okay, this is a public hearing. Did you have any other comments? This is a public hearing. If anyone would like to make comment on this, they can come up to the podium at this Okay, seeing no one come up to the podium, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I'm going to close the public hearing.
Motion by Commissioner Watson. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Hentges. Okay, and Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Von Haag? Yes. Commissioner Watson?
Yes.
Commissioner Hentges?
Yes.
Commissioner Hartman?
Yes.
Commissioner Huber? Still not here. Commissioner Robbie?
Here.
Okay, public hearing is closed. At this time, I will entertain a motion for action on this ordinance proposal here at this time.
Mr. Chair? I recommend approval of the zoning ordinance amendments to Chapters 1 and 71 as presented in the staff report and attached exhibits. Let this item be forwarded to the county board for consideration and action.
Very good. I have a motion by Commissioner Hartman. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
A second by Commissioner Johnson. Is there any further discussion before I call for a vote? Hearing none, I will call for a vote on this. Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Von Haag? Yes. Commissioner Watson?
Yes.
Commissioner Hentges?
Yes.
Commissioner Hartman?
Yes.
Commissioner Huber? Still not here. Commissioner Robbie?
Yes.
Motion passes, six votes. Thank you very much, Mr. Wagner. And we will move on to our next item, which is a public hearing. It's the JMH Land Development Complan Amendment, 2020-063. It's a request to consider a comprehensive plan amendment to amend planned land use map for PIDs 099170080 and 099080100. Location is Section 8 and 17, Township Sand Creek, current zoning is UBR. And Mr. Davis will be making the staff report. Good evening, Mr. Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. So I will provide an overview of the staff report and just some general information on the request. I know the applicants are here tonight, and so I'll ask them to come up at some point too and say a few words about the request. And then I'll go through some of the comments that we've heard from some jurisdictions during the formal 60-day review period, and then talk about some of the public comments that we've received so far, and just share a little bit more background, and then, of course, you're welcome in that opening up the public hearing.
Very good.
So just a little bit of background I have on the screen for those of you in the room and following along on streaming this meeting, a location of the property. It's about 100 acres of land northeast of the city of Jordan. Land that's generally between the Valley View Drive and Highway 169. Currently being farmed. You can see on the air photos, some uses, if you're familiar with the area, you know that there's some institutional uses just to the north. The skill regional training facility is located just to the north with shooting range and a burn tower. The county's juvenile alternative center, the JAF Center, is located just to the north of that. Mosquito Control District is just in the north of that. So it's a little bit of a mix of institutional uses. To the south is residential areas, and then you can see just in the corner, a portion of the city of Jordan's wastewater treatment plant. So that gives you just a little bit of an idea of the vicinity. So as you mentioned, Mr. Chair, the JMH Land Development Company is requesting an amendment to the 2040 Comprehensive Plan, the Plan Land Use Map, to change to the twenty-forty comprehensive plan, the planned land use map, to change the guidance for this property highlighted in red from urban business reserve to industrial. JMH is making the request on behalf of and in cooperation with the underlying property owner, and that's Jordan Gravel LLC. So this is a, just to zoom in, usually we would use the document camera, but we don't have that capability, so I just made a, a copy of the twenty-forty comprehensive plan highlighted in red again as the subject property. This gives you an idea of kind of bigger picture, the whole corridor from, this whole corridor between Valley View and one-sixty-nine, north of the city up to the Sand Creek Industrial Park is all guided in that urban business reserve. This guidance came in, I think, in two thousand nine when the twenty-thirty comprehensive plan was adopted. Prior to that, it was urban expansion. So it's always been on the radar for eventual city growth area. The timing has always been kind of the part that we try to nail down each ten years and try to get indication from the city of Jordan when they plan to grow an annex into this area. So the idea is it would always be guided for something non-residential. It'd either be a commercial use, or in this case, the request is for it to be more of a industrial use. But that's been the guidance now for the last, since two thousand nine, we continued with that guidance in the twenty-forty comprehensive plan. This just zooms in a little bit more. This is the map that we use when we send out notices to the adjacent jurisdictions. Again, currently, it's in that handy state color, urban business reserve, and the request is to go to the county's industrial classification or category. So as you read in the staff report, and we'll certainly allow the applicant to provide more detail, but the applicant wishes to subdivide the one-hundred-acre property into five industrial lots. They provided a concept sketch layout that's included in the staff report. They came to a development review team meeting about two months ago to share their concept with county staff and township staff, as well as city staff, just to hear firsthand what the, what the proposed use of the property is. Anticipated uses include businesses that require a building and then outdoor storage and parking. The types of uses that we've heard the applicant talk about is a contractor yard, landscaping services, trucking, logistics, repair, restoration work, general office work, warehousing, or manufacturing. So these range of uses are currently not allowed under the current zoning. Current zoning is urban business reserve. It's, I'll have a page later that shows what kind of the typical common uses we get in that zoning district and what would be allowed if it got moved to this like industrial or what we call I-Oran Rural Industrial Zoning District. So I showed on the earlier photo, the property is accessed off of Valley View Drive. In this segment is a gravel township road. Again, most of the uses in this area are residential with institutional uses. This would be the first industrial area guided in this stretch of Valley View Drive. Over half of the property is in the flood plain. We just talked about the flood plains, so it's generally this area in yellow. The area in yellow is Hydrick soils, I don't think we have the flood plain layer on this map, but generally it's that area in that eastern part of the, of the parcel. And so when there's been other uses proposed for this property, most recently, I think a lot of commissioners might remember that Jordan Gravel had proposed a mining operation on this site. At that time, that triggered an environmental impact statement review and a lot of documentation on the environment on traffic impacts that counties have on this property. That was generally in the twenty-eleven to twenty-sixteen time period. Ultimately, that interim use permit to mine was denied by the county board. So with all requests for complent amendments, we go through a process, we send out notices to the neighboring jurisdictions, ask them to give us formal comment, I'll share that comment with you. But this request is really a precursor to any rezoning that may occur, so this would be step one. If there's approval of this land use change, the property owner would then have the ability to come in at some point and request a rezone and a plat, and maybe even a conditional use permit depending on what's being proposed in order to develop the property. Any type of industrial building requires plating, so that's an automatic trigger that we need to go through the plating process. And it's through the plating process that we would spend a lot of time talking about lot sizes, septic, stormwater management, rookway improvements. Just so that you kind of know the sequence here, that should this proceed, you would also have a chance to review any plats related to this development, the actual rezoning process, and again, any conditional use or interim use permits if it's, if it's a use that they're looking at doing. This is the second requested planned land use amendment since we've adopted the plan. That too is a property initiated amendment. If you recall, that was Diamond WLLC requesting a change from urban expansion to commercial of the rural township. This is, this is now the third one in Sand Creek Township since the twenty-thirty plan, and I'll talk a little bit about that and where those were located and what the situation was. So in your staff report, we talked about the process, the Met Council requires us to send out notice, get comments from adjacent jurisdictions, hold this public hearing tonight, get comments from neighboring property owners, submit all this information and your recommendation up to the county board. The county board will then be asked to conditionally approve or deny the request. If it's approved, it then gets further, gets sent on from the department council. They'll get to look at it, they'll look at all the comments, whether there's any impacts this land use change would have on any regional systems, and they would come back and let us know if they agree with the amendment or not, and whether we should put it into effect. So it is a process that we have to follow. You'll see here on the screen the jurisdictions that were notified. Now, just maybe before I go through the comments, seems like a good segue, I'm going to ask the applicant to come up and just introduce himself, introduce JMH Land Company. This is a company that has done other projects in the metro and I think in some of our cities, but I believe is the first one in our township, so I want him to introduce himself and then introduce his-
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. My name is Mark Sonstegard, I'm with JMH Land Company. JMH Land, just a little quick history on JMH Land Company. It is a relatively new company, started up last winter. The majority owner of JMH Land Company is the Steve Hentges family, just so that you know the background on the JMH Company. We do, and we are working on both commercial development, industrial development, and residential development throughout the Twin Cities. Currently, we're working on this industrial site, we have another commercial site that we're working on, the South Metro. We also have two residential developments that we're working on in the South Metro, one in Apple Valley and the other in Laconia. A little background on myself, I've been involved in land development for approximately twenty-four years. I don't know if you remember a company called Ryland Homes, I was the, I was in charge of the entitlements and land development for that company through its run. Ryland Homes eventually changed its name to CalAtlantic Homes while it converged with a company out west, and then again, continued to work in entitlements and land development there. And then, as you may know, Lanar Homes or Lanar Corporation purchased CalAtlantic Homes a few years ago, so then I moved with that and started working with the Lanar Land Company and oversaw all their in-the-field development work. So about a year ago, Steve, the Hentges family asked me to come over, they were interested in starting up a new land development company, and I accepted, and we started working from there. So that's basically, you know, the background of JMH Land. I've also, you know, out of college, I did a year worth of commercial work, and I've also spent some time working with municipalities as an internship in one of my first jobs out of college. For this particular job, we've assembled the team. Nick Bono with Carlson and McCain will be leading our planning and all of our engineering. Melissa Bogart with Celag will be overseeing all of our environmental and wetland work. And then for market research and market study and sales, we've retained John Roush from Cushman and Wakefield, so that's basically our team for planning this industrial site moving forward. Both Nick and I are here to answer any questions you may have, but we certainly would appreciate your support, changing the guidance from this property from a business reserve to an industrial area. Thanks.
Thank you.
All right, so certainly they'll stay for any questions we have as we get into the hearing, but I will continue on. So some of the things that we heard from the neighboring jurisdictions, Sand Creek Township provided a comment letter that's part of your staff report. Generally, the town board stated they're not opposed to the concept, but any proposed industrial uses would require substantial upgrades to surrounding road infrastructure as part of any plating and development process. And on the bullets there, they made it very specific that some of those upgrades would need to be paving the gravel portion of Valley View Drive from the subject property south to the city of Jordan limits to a ten-ton standard, evaluating the railroad crossing, making sure that it would be adequate for the type of traffic that would be proposed, making sure that the paved portion of Valley View Drive north of the subject property meets ten-ton pavement standards, making sure that the Sand Creek gradus part of the property is able to handle, sufficient to handle the anticipated traffic flows, and reviewing the street access number from Highway one-sixty-nine. So those are things that the township has put for the applicant who's on notice, if they would expect these things to be addressed if the land does get reguided and we're receiving applications to plat the land, there's all of them. The city of Jordan commented, and you have their comment letter in your packet as well. The property is partially located in its post-two thousand forty growth boundary, but is not planned to be served by public sanitary sewer water, sanitary sewer and water in the near term. In fact, when you go to the letter, they, they say that generally they envision this area to be more residential and useful, but they are not opposed to an industrial use. So a little bit of a mixed signal there, but they did not outright oppose the proposed use of this going to industrial. They include a map, and this map has a lot going on, but the one boundary to just pay attention to is this dashed red line around the city limits. Here's the city limits today of the city of Jordan. And this dashed red line is that two thousand forty growth boundary, and the subject parcel is generally about right at the edge of that line. And so this is a map of the city's two thousand forty comprehensive plan indicating where they plan future extensions of sewer and water, but in the letter that we received indicates that this particular corner of their growth area is not anticipated to see any services in the near term, and if I correctly add it as well, probably even past the year two thousand forty before there'd be any plans to send sewer water up to this point of their growth area. The focus of the city's investments today is really in the other direction, more to the southwest. They're planning a lot of infrastructure to serve growth southwest of the city along the one-sixty-nine corridor, a lot of this area shaded in yellow. The third entity that provided comments was the Jordan Public School District. Their main comment here is on your screen, they're concerned that with the adjacency of juvenile detention, juvenile tornado facility, there could be some traffic concerns with some industrial uses just down the road from that facility. Included in the staff report is the, some description that was provided in the application. They provided some of the vacancy rate information that prompted them to look at maybe looking for a guidance change on this, they believe there's a market for this type of development. They provided some example type of projects that they envisioned for some of these proposed lots, and then this was the concept layout of where the lots and buildings would be located along Valley View. So in your packet, or in your supplemental information you received tonight, we bundled, I believe, eight letters that we've received from public, since the public hearing notices went out. Probably half of them come from people that are in the room tonight, so we'll certainly let them come and verbalize the key points of their letters during the public hearing. I just want to make sure that you are aware of them. And for those that are not here tonight, I just want to make sure that you saw the letters. Gary Shallow provided a letter that's here on the screen, that's letter one in your packet. Herb Baldwin provided a comment letter, and Herb is here tonight, so I'm sure he will speak to that. Joe Lachner provided a comment letter on behalf of his parents, and that was letter three in your packet. Megan and Steve Galantin provided a letter, that's letter number four in your packet. Nancy Murray provided a comment letter, letter number five. So I just want you to know that you have that letter now in the, in the public record. Letter six comes from Peggy Jordanette, she is here tonight, so I will let her hit the points of that letter. Letter seven is from John Goddard, he provided this comment, and that's letter number seven. And then letter number eight just came in tonight, I handed a copy to you, Tom Broncher, you should have that in your records in time. I'm a chair, and I'm sure you'll want to speak to the comments of that letter. I mentioned earlier that in Sand Creek Township, from the two thousand thirty plan now moving to the two thousand forty plan, we've had a couple of situations like this where a property owner has an idea of creating a business on the property and asked to go through a land use change or for him to accommodate that development. Wes Herman and Herman Landscaping was one business that did that back in the early two thousands. They were looking at relocating their business to south of Berkshire Cul-de-sac, here just north of this area, up the one-sixty-nine corridor. So their area was in that urban business reserve category, and they requested an amendment to commercial to allow them to, allow them to relocate and expand. That was one example where we've entertained this type of a request and eventually did recommend approval of that request. Another example is actually just north of this one, about four or five years later, By the Yard was a local business looking to relocate, expand into a newer building and came to us requesting a re-guidance of these two parcels here, again, just on the other side of Berkshire, and those also were in the same category we're looking at tonight. In the two thousand thirty plan, it was called commercial reserve, we just changed it to urban business reserve for the same, same category. That too went from this commercial reserve to the commercial and industrial designation, and then we ultimately rezoned it industrial so they could up their manufacturing and sales in a showroom there by the yard. So those are two other examples where we've seen this. That's- those are two other examples where we've seen this. That's really been the most common situation, to be honest, with complaint amendments, is it's been property owners that have looked to move out of that commercial reserve category into a category that they can develop. Because that commercial reserve is really intended to hold land until annexation. And so the whole philosophy of commercial reserve or urban business reserve is really limit any uses on the property until it gets annexed to the adjacent city and served by city sewer and water. It's these parcels out in the northern part of Sand Creek Township that it became very clear that neither the city of Jordan or the city of Shakopee was ever going to annex these properties anytime soon. They used decades, or maybe never, before they would commit to being able to actually annex these parcels. Obviously, this is a little bit different in this situation. We're closer to the city of Jordan boundary. So that's different application that we're getting from the city of Jordan is to have new plans to extend sewer and water to this area. So those are two situations. This is another just important element to this, because I know that the township had raised some issues about any traffic that ultimately would head north, get 173rd, and then need to figure out how they're going to pop onto 169. And I think a lot of people in the room are aware of a lot of the good planning that Sand Creek Township has done with Nindot and with the county as well to try to find some funding to help really rearrange some of the roads out there so that we can close some of those direct access points along this stretch of Sand Creek Township. So this is tilted a little different. This is north, and here's the Sand Creek Industrial Park and the old by the yard and Herman's Landscaping that I was just talking about. But ultimately, the plan is to be able to connect a road from 173rd up to, what's the name of this road? Jordan Avenue, thank you. And at some point, have an overpass to allow truck traffic to be able to take that overpass, get on Berkshire, and then head north, if that's the destination flowing. So those are some really important improvements for any of the land uses that we're looking at down at the stretch. So finally, there's been also just some discussion about kind of the zoning, is the spot zoning, and so those comments that you've seen from the public. So I just wanted to point out what the zoning change would look like. So today, the property is zoned urban business reserve. On the left is the common uses that we see in this zoning district. It's the agricultural uses, feedlots, although we don't see a lot of feedlots in this part of the county, but we do have some urban business reserve parcels that are feedlots, commercial nurseries, government buildings and storage, substations, farm equipment sales, mining, outdoor commercial rec. So those are the types of uses that could happen without change in the land use at all. And then on the right-hand side is, if this change does happen and the property does get rezoned to rural industrial, continue to do the agricultural uses. You can continue to do the government buildings, substations. You could not be able to do commercial nurseries or farm equipment sales. You could continue to mine it. Could not do outdoor recreation. But then there is a lot of other things that are allowed in that rural industrial, truck body and repair, community solar gardens, contractor yards, indoor commercial rec, mini storage lumberyards, manufacturing warehouse, wheel sale, one of the sales and office. And I highlighted in yellow some of the things that we heard in the applicants and the concept there of the types of uses that they're looking at doing. So that explains why if they wanted to pursue those uses, they would need to do the land use guidance change and then rezon the property. So that's all I have for a background. I'll turn it back over to you for questions before we open the public hearing.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Davis. Questions?
One of the components here that's going to be critical to this development is going to be the road infrastructure. Do we have any idea on a detailed plan with regard to offloading off 169, 173rd, upgrade the bridge there, and then Valley View Drive, which is obviously needs to be done, something down there? If there's a plan, is that plan a two-way road? Is that a three-lane road? And how do we account for turnouts? Turnouts and connecting over the railroad tracks onto the road that Valley View takes us back through the residential area? We got two businesses in there, Seiwick and I think the Transformer Company. So I just was curious to know if we got any kind of idea on that? Is there a plan in place? That's going to be really important. Plus, who is going to have your financial responsibility?
Yeah, I'll answer some of those. I think the applicant also has information they want to share on some of those questions. When it comes to what's on the screen here, these realigned frontage road connections and the overpass, I think there's plans in place. There's a real effort to get funding for that, but none of it is known exactly when these improvements will go in. So I can't state here tonight that I know exactly when that's going to happen. I can just say that there are plans for it when the money becomes The number of lanes, is that on Valley View Drive that you're wondering, if it's a two-lane or three-lane? Maybe the applicant has some insight in that. I don't know if the city or township has any plans to add more lanes to Valley View. I haven't heard that. I've just heard just improving it as a paved two-lane road. And then improvements to the rail crossing. I know that the applicant, I think Nick, you have some information on the rail crossing. Do you want to address that question?
Sure.
Yep. Come up to the podium and please identify yourself. There's a sign up there, two, I believe. Sign up sheet, please sign in. Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to speak here tonight. My name is Nick Bono, an engineer with Carlson-McKean. And I've actually been working on this site for over 10 years. I was working on it when they had proposed the gravel mining operation at that time. So I'm quite familiar with all of the work that was done as part of the EIS and happy to provide some of that background here. In regards to some of the road infrastructure around the site, there were a number of questions that were received from the township and others on that. And I can answer a few of those here this evening. One of those was the condition of the paved portion of Valley View Drive now to the north of the property. And I just provided to Brett Davis this morning a copy of the, basically the index sheet, sheet one of the original design plans for that Valley View Drive improvement project back in 1998, which indicated a 10-ton design for that. In 2016, as a part of the EIS for the mining operation, there was a pavement analysis that was conducted, which they actually took some cores of the pavement and the subbase and looked at it and confirmed that it does meet the 10-ton standard. Also, found an inspection report for the 173rd Street Bridge from May of this year, which indicated the bridge is in adequate condition and is rated for a load of approximately 27 tons indefinitely and approximately 65 tons max. So the existing infrastructure, as far as the pavement and the bridge, all would appear to be satisfactory for any of the proposed uses on the site. With regards to the railroad crossing, there was also a traffic analysis done as part of the EIS that did identify a number of different haul route alternatives. I think they ended up coming up with six different options, and all of them involved traffic going to the north out of the site and then accessing 169 at 173rd Street. In the midst of that process, I believe, is when the, that intersection went to a three-quarter intersection where the northbound access was removed. So all the options did involve traffic being routed south, and then there were a number of different things in play as far as when they would turn back around to go north on 169. So that part of it has been studied quite extensively. A part of that study looked at the rail crossing on Valley View Drive, and the township was interested in possibly reconfiguring that to allow for a more of a 90-degree intersection there. But the rail, or the guard arms and lights had been fairly recently installed at that intersection, and the analysis stated that there was really no, with that being the case, there was really no analysis that would show that a 90-degree crossing would result in any measurable safety improvements. So that, but that ultimately wasn't really germane to the project because all of the traffic was going to be routed to the north. So that's kind of some of the background on the existing infrastructure. Well, I guess one other thing about the gravel surface portion of Valley View does have a sufficient thickness of subbase for future pavement in that area. But I guess as far as the overall kind of regional 169 access, really not much beyond the existing access and 173rd Street was studied during that EIS.
Commissioner Herman?
What's the last sentence you said?
As part of the EIS, I know we've been talking about some potential connection between 173rd Street and Jordan Avenue and then crossing over 169. None of that was really analyzed during the EIS process. It was all focused on the access onto 169 at 173rd with all that traffic being routed to the south.
Commissioner Watson, did you have further questions?
I've got a few questions. Some of us were on the board when Jordan at Gravel applied to do the mining there a few years ago. And so we're, at least I am anyway, fairly well-versed on it. I don't remember any discussion back then on that bridge on 173rd Street being an issue. So today, or this was the first time I can remember anyway, that there was an issue, possible issue, with the bridge on 173rd. And then the gravel, I was just curious on the history of, on Jordan Avenue, back in the day, Wes Herman's dad, Sweet Herman, had his Herman excavating business there. That road was gravel. Mullen Trucking moved in there. And then gradually, more and more businesses, Greystone, By the Yard, the Seed Company, Pallet Company, I think Noble RV is in there. Somewhere along the line, the road, Jordan Avenue got blacktopped. So the question I have is, how did that happen and who paid for it back then?
I don't know if I know the answer.
I was hoping Chad Sandy would have been here. He would have known the answer, maybe.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner. I do understand the question. I don't know if I know exactly the answer to that question of who paid for it and how it got paid. I'll glance at Bill. Have you heard that story before, Bill? So it's definitely a question that I can do some research and come back, but I don't know.
Yeah, I was just curious on the history of how these township roads get blacktopped and who pays for them and when and who decides. I'm not saying they shouldn't be blacktopped. I'm just was wanting to know the history of it. And then, one more thing, Mr. Chair, one more topic.
Go ahead. Continue.
Brad, this community well and sewer idea that the city of Jordan proposed, is that a good idea?
Yeah, I want to bring that comment up. So one idea raised in the city of Jordan's comment letter is maybe instead of putting individual septic and well on each of the five lots, or how many lots are proposed, then instead they have a shared community system so that it's easier to connect up with the city at some point in the future. It's a good idea. It's hard to implement. Right now, it may require the township to support having a community septic system on this property, and that requires setting up some service districts and things and figuring out how to fund that type of infrastructure. There'd be a lot of discussion we would need to have with the Sand Creek Town Board to see how much they would support that development type. Our ordinance doesn't require it. You can't require a property owner to do a community septic system. We've only entertained the proposal when they come in. Usually, it's for more density. So we've mainly seen it on the residential side. We have not seen a lot of commercial development use community septic. So in order to hook up a future sewer pipe from the city, it has a lot of merit. I just don't know whether we can get full support from the town board or even from the developer. The county can't require it, is I guess is one way to answer that.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Commissioner Johnson?
I don't know if Mr. Stan DeGuard or Mr. Bono wants to take my question. You cited three properties. Two of them are pretty close to the area where you're going to develop. But one of them is BKJ Land Company, which is in Spring Lake Township, very east, many, many, many miles away. And that's my property. And I don't know why you picked mine when you had certainly other ones to pick. But I don't know if that takes me out of the discussion and voting or not. Why did you pick that? Did you know I owned it?
Good. Maybe you were an easy target.
Commissioner Johnson, I was the one that picked those properties as examples of what could go in this industrial site. I had no idea that was, you had any involvement with that property at all.
Well, Mr. Lachner calls these all eyesores. To the east of my property is Scott County, and they have a lot of storage. I store a lot of things on my property for Spring Lake Township because they don't have a yard. So I store culverts and some gravel when we have to send snow in the wintertime. But yet, that's considered an eyesore. So I did take offense to that comment.
Okay. So that was just a coincidence on our part.
Okay.
Any other comments? The applicant want to make any more information, more information before I open this up to the public hearing? Okay. This time, I'm opening this up. This is a public hearing. Anyone who would like to come up and make comment on this application before us, please come up to the podium. There's a sign up list there. And I'll slide into that. And also start your comments with your name. Good evening.
Good evening, Commissioners. Good evening. Thank you so much for being here and being willing to hear from everyone involved, or that more people that might potentially have things to say.
Thank you for coming out this evening.
Yes. Okay. So my name is Peggy Jo Donnet. And, well, I have been coming to this area for the last 31 years because I used to, I bored my horses at a property right next, I don't know if I can show you where it is, but I mean, it's right there.
We can't see it unless you point down. Do you have the overhead?
I'll point with this. What can I do? Well, I believe that the horse property must be this one here, I think. Or this one here. Maybe it's this way. You can see it's very, very close. And I want to say that the portrait that was first drawn of the area by Mr. Davis, I really don't think that it does describe what it's like. You know, it sounded like, well, we've got all these, you know, the juvenile center and the scale. You know, you'd think it was all crammed together. the scale and the, you know, you'd think it was all crammed together and that the place really did look like an industrial site of some type, but it really doesn't. It's, the area is spread out. The National Wildlife Refuge wasn't even mentioned. And it is a huge feature here. And it's a big member of this community, is that area. And I want you to understand that it is agricultural and it is natural and it is quiet. It's really a very, very nice place. The riding stable is run by a woman who opens her place up to lots of children that come to learn. There are kids that have had emotional problems and physical problems and handicaps and various things, and she's always opened her arms to all of them. And we can come to this place and it's quiet and it's safe and it's beautiful. So I just want you to know that it's, this isn't, you know, Herman's or an industrial park and it's not right on 169. So it really is a very special place that has existed the way it is for many, 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 many years. So that is the first thing I really think I have to tell you. I love this area so much that I bought the land right next door to my friend Mary. I've known Mary since I was eight years old. We learned to ride from the same riding teacher. And then life brought us together and we found each other together. This isn't a not-in-my-backyard issue. I want you to know that this goes beyond any kind of love that all of our neighbors may have for this, but changing this kind of a use right now is a very large departure from the comp plan and from the zoning right now. Let's see, what did I buy? Next door to my friend Mary. Okay, I bought a little five-acre plot right here and I waited four years until I had the money to buy a house, which I moved onto the land. So now I live right next door and Mary's horses come up to my back gate, drink out of my trough, and I clean stalls every night. So I mean, I love this area and I have actually lived there now for the last four or five First of all, it appears that allowing this to be used now for an industrial use is really a significant departure from any current use of the property now or anything around I thought I would ask you, a very important question that I think comes into this right away is, if you could please tell me, what is spot zoning? Mr. Davis, can you tell me what spot zoning is?
Sure.
Thank you for responding, Mr. Davis.
Yeah, no, we saw this in a lot of comment letters. Spot zoning is when you rezon a particular piece of land so that they can do something that no one else around them would be able to do. And so the example often is to zone a property in the middle of a residential area for commercial and industrial use to provide that property in advantage, to do something that the neighboring properties can't do. So the question that's come to us isn't this spot zoning? And I've answered that question from a couple of people that have called. The county doesn't see this as spot zoning. The property is zoned for a non-residential use. It's really a holding zone until city sewer and water come and then it can develop any commercial use that the city would allow. We're looking at changing the designations so the property owner can do something today that's non-residential and not wait for annexation. So we don't consider that a spot zone. Everything around it is in that same kind of commercial reserve area. What this would do, probably what this policy changes is it does consider now that this whole stretch of Valley View maybe won't annex. And maybe in the 2050 comprehensive plan, we're going to have to re-guide the property differently if we start making these changes parcel by parcel. But that's my answer to the spot zoning.
Okay, thank you for that.
Thank you for that, but I humbly disagree. I think this is spot zoning. It fits the definition exactly. The process of singling out a small parcel of land to use classification totally different from that of the surrounding area for the benefit of the owner of such property and to the detriment of others. So I really, I think this is spot zoning. Now, another thing about spot zoning, I did a little research on it on the internet, and the cases when spot zoning has come up, they have lost in part. You can't do it. And I don't know whether you're aware of this. I think it's important to become aware that this is a thing and it doesn't work. It's not viewed favorably. Thank the Lord, because otherwise, here we are. We're taking something that we, all the surrounding areas, you know, they, I mean, all you have to do is look. Is this, is this a zone? Is this an industrial zone? Is this an industrial zone? Is this? Is this? Is this? Are we talking about industrial use? I mean, can you say that we are? I don't, I don't, I don't think we are. So we're talking about plopping something in here and ruining it. And it's not right and it's not legal from my research. This is illegal. You can't do this. It's been in court. So why are we going to set up something now that could very easily go to court again and lose? So it would be a waste of our time and our money to go down a road that we've seen and that has not prevailed. So I think that's very, very important. There were those three photos that were proposed as samples from the staff report. It was on page 14, as I found it scrolling on the staff report. This was the property that ended up being yours. And I beg your pardon, and I don't mean to disrespect your own property or anything, but if they're using that picture, I don't know how to show it to you. Okay, so just a little bit ago, I asked you to look around and I asked you, does this look like an industrial area? Does this look like industrial? I asked you that question surrounding the property. And now with this, I'm going to ask you, here's the property that they're giving as a sample. Does this look like industrial use? I think it does. They showed us this. Does this look like in some kind of industrial use? I think it does. And so does this on this side, down here again. It's surrounded by industrial use. So I just, and then By the Yard, that's already on 169. I don't think we can really talk about it more being a similar thing. It's right on the highway. Herman's is already in an industrial park. These are places that have occurred in areas that do match, and this doesn't. We're talking about something that does not match. And that is exactly the point of spot zoning and not allowing it. So that was definitely important. It was very important. You know, the development goals and objectives of, you know, municipalities and counties, they're supposed to consider restricting new industrial development in such a way that it is subject to the following goals and developments. Minimizing the fragmentation and development of agricultural forests, wildlife, open space lands. Minimizing the fragmentation of those. And minimizing development near wildlife management areas. You know, have you driven down that road and seen how beautiful that area is? And it's quiet and there's all kinds of migratory birds that come and nest there. You know, it's a special place. It really is a special place. And it needs to be kept that way. It just, it really is something that we would, it would be scarred and we would say, look at what we allowed here. And, you know, it's just the wrong use. It's the wrong use. I think amending the 2040 comprehensive plan is a really big step. I think making an amendment to a document like that is not a small thing. And especially if you do it for these reasons. I, I, I just, it's abhorrent. I think it's really not the right thing to do. Then, of course, there are issues about, you know, the water table. We talked a lot about this during the gravel proposal, that the water table sits up, you know, nine feet or so below the surface. It's right there. So any industrial accidental spillage there, you know, the added burden of all the water use and the, anything could spill into that, into the water table. And that's the water that we drink. And I'm not the only one. There's a whole bunch of us that drink out of that aquifer. Maybe you even do, because these aquifers, they spread a long way. So this is a very sensitive area with, the ground is not appropriate for anything industrial. And that's part of why the gravel mine was not allowed before. As a side note, Brad mentioned that one of the uses that would even be possible in this, under this type of, you know, zoning would be to continue to mine it. I heard him say that and I almost fell off my chair. You can't open that gate because we, that's already, that just can't happen. You can't dig into an aquifer. It's like creating a great huge open cesspool that everything can fall into and you'd never be done with it. You can't shut that up once you start it. And that was the problem there. I don't know, shared septic, I don't think that's a good idea either, because if there's five, six businesses on there and one of them pollutes, well, you know, it goes at all those, you know, you can't contain it. And then there's a lot of time we talked about, oh, mitigation, they're going to mitigate the water. But why would you start here? Why should we, as the neighbors and the people who drink out of that, well, why should we have to mitigate something that was unnecessary here? That was not right from the beginning? You know, and that's the same thing about, you know, the disturbance and the, you know, the truck traffic and everything. Why should we have to bear that when it's not allowed now? Why make a change like this and ask us to be the ones to live with it? So, I mean, it's wrong on so many levels. I also want you to understand the railroad crossing situation here. There is a abandoned Valley View Drive that where many people have died. It is a dangerous right turn down there. So that's not any small item or expense or concern. It's a real thing. I was there one night and they drove there and all the lights were flashing and the emergency people just told me, don't come here because someone has been splattered all over the yard there. And that was a real thing. And have you ever tried to get on 169 from 173rd? Now, the fact that they changed it and made it, you can only turn right, you can only turn south when coming out of 173rd. But if you have a big truck of some kind, you're going to be going slowly for quite a while and then you have to cross the traffic and then slow down again so that you can turn and go north. You know how many horrible accidents have happened in that area to start with? And for us to think about adding truck traffic and commercial activity there, I don't think that's a good thing for the residents of Scott County and the people who come driving through that have nothing to do with us here. It's really setting up a flow of vehicles that would not be there, not for all of these five parcels of activity that shouldn't be there to start with. There are reports that, yeah, the county board should consider the effects of noise from landlords' desired use of property, even if the noise level did not surpass the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency noise standards. And I agree with that. It's a commotion that I think should not be burdened onto the people nearby. Then, let's see. Well, I asked on, what was the purpose of a UVR, the Urban Business Reserve Zoning District? And the district must consider to reduce the possibility of urban rural land use conflicts. That's one of the things that they ask you to do when you're talking about zoning and things. And I don't see, if you can tell me, how does this rezoning reduce the conflict? And it's one of the first, it's the second of three objectives on the Scott County Expose on UVR zoning districts. So the conflict that you'd be creating, again, I don't see why you'd start. And then, I mean, everybody's thinking, yeah, the applicant should be able to do whatever they want to this property. Not when it affects others like this, breaking from precedent. And, you know, it's not, well, it's not allowed by law, but it also, it isn't right for all the people that would be affected by this. The industrial use does not match the surrounding area. It's spot zoning and it's not allowed by Minnesota law. I just think we can't start this sled down the slope and let this be rezoned, you know, like there's, oh, it's industrial, but don't worry, it'll be late industrial. Who knows what it's going to be? If this are sold off to five different people, people, businesses change. So it's a zoning right here that never need to start. I don't know, the burden of poor decisions shouldn't be ours to bear. This district is against it. And I know there are some more letters that should have come in. I know two of them at least that should have been here. There were 800 items in the Jordan gravel file of people who had come up for reasons why this area, this property shouldn't be developed. It was the biggest document that they had ever seen in terms of response of people in the neighborhood. And many, if not most, of those issues remain alive in this area. I don't think the time has come now to change use. I know the city of Jordan, you said they're not planning to use this, so it's not now. This is not, this is not the place, this is not the setting.
Mr. Chair? I have a question. I have to apologize, I'm hard of hearing.
Oh.
In the midst of the mask, I missed your name when you.
Oh, it's Peggy Jo Dennett.
Peggy?
Yes.
Are you in one of these letters?
I am, yes.
Which one?
The one, let's see, how can I?
Peggy, you said?
Yes.
Two, I think. No, three, letter three.
Three.
Letter six. Letter number six.
Letter six?
I know my husband sent a letter that was not among the letters that were shown at the beginning, so perhaps others have come in in the meantime.
Yeah, number six. So Hyve Drive is where?
Okay, Hyve Drive, okay, now we need to come back to the.
It's a little ways from it.
Okay, well, we can't, we cannot see it. It's not, I'll continue to show you with a mouse what you do. So you're coming down Valley View Drive and then you turn right on Circle Drive and then you turn right on Hyve Drive and that enters my property, which is this wedge-shaped property here, you know, touches, now when you drive it, and from which I can see the proposed site. You can see it from my property, if that helps you.
Good, circle. Okay, thank you.
Did you have any more comments?
I don't think so.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
The podium is open. Yeah, sure. Yeah, absolutely.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission. My name is Herb Baldwin. I used to sit back there a bit. If I may approach you.
Absolutely.
Please. I have some things that I just want to simply talk from.
Okay, thanks, Herb.
Somebody got two?
Uh, got one. That's enough, thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I hope you can hear me as we all are suffering from muffled voices. But it's in interest of keeping ourselves healthy. And if you noted that today, the first shipment of the vaccine was released from Detroit. Let's hope that we all have an opportunity to benefit from that. My wife and I and our family, we live, yeah, somewhere in here. We live right here. This is, the property is, we have 34 acres of land. And having benefited from the research that members of this organization that is loose but specific and very powerful did some research on the laws of Minnesota. And if I were to refer to them, that the idea, and I try hard to imagine Brad, the definition of the county, it sounds like, well, it isn't something, but we might as well make it this. Well, this piece of property is so precious. It is so unique. And it exists in an area which is very, very unique. And it's part of our heritage. And make a study of the Old River Warren as it carved its way from the rupture of the Agazie Glacier and the way it scoured the area all the way over to the Mississippi. It's beautiful. I understand that the Henscheses have a desire to do something with their property. But by their proposal of moving this from urban reserve to industrial without a definition of industrial other than, well, we're thinking we might do this, this, or that. It's clearly, clearly, clearly spot zoning. And there have been many cases, as Peggy alluded to, that confirmed that fact by governmental agencies in both the metropolitan area and areas outside of that, outside the metro. So as a professional, land planning and design, I'm a landscape architect, but I didn't renew my license so I can't call myself one of those. I'm an educator, I was a professor over at the university in Minnesota for 25 years. Myself and Ralph Rapsen started the School of Land Architecture in the School of Architecture back in 65. And I'm 26, does that add up? No, I'm not sure it does. But the whole thing was that we were focused on the way in which we develop and treat land. And it was incumbent on us to provide our students, my clients, with the criteria, if you will, as I've mentioned here, is that they're... Yeah, I think one, five words that we taught and I practiced. And they're here, they're context, continuity, connectivity, and comprehensivity. That, by the way, is a word that I came up with. I don't think you find it in the dictionary. They applying these terms will clearly say that by changing this zoning classification from this sort of vague, I guess, what do we do with this property? To industrial is unlawful. And I've cited the Minnesota statute number so that you can invest in it. The, there are other negatives that are cited being unlawful. There are other negative issues that you've heard about. The existing river, the flood plain, wells, on-site septic systems, pollution, visual noise, waters, traffic, and so forth, including all the impact of the adjacent elements, which agriculture and existing residences. And also including this parcel which has little definition as to what it is. Brad, can you bring up your four, three sites? I'm a retired captain in the United States Army, second corps. I'm trained, I have my top secret CRM and the Constitution to handle the President's mail, which I did, but it was in the Cold War, probably back before many of you were born. I'm 26. One of the things that I had to do was to be able to look at a plan in a real view and be able to say, is this really the example that we might have down there? And by reading into these proposals, and I understand they're a proposal, I see a mess. I see a site that is being abused and mistreated. And then you say, well, so what? Well, I also know, you say, go to the memory of Cy Wolf. I know Bill Lowes, he was a dear, dear friend. We were part of the Planning Commission that was attached to Sand Creek Township down there. And we went down to the irrigation pond the city had. And I don't know whether any of you are farmers, but because I know, corn doesn't like to grow where its feet are wet. And the irrigation pond was fully planted with very proud-looking corn stalks yielding a tremendous amount of yield. Bushels, great. We were concerned because what happened was that the processing plant there at that time had a large gap coming out and there was a shooting of the effluent into this irrigation pond, maybe 25, 30 feet, something like that, and it disappeared. We ran some dye tests and on the other side of the irrigation pond, we found the dye, evidence of the dye. And so I'm thinking about digging a foundation or letting some of this effluent or runoff, stormwater runoff from some of these sites. And I know they could be much more cleaned up if given the chance possibly. But what I'm saying is that this site is so tender, is so unique, that we found that that, when we put the dye and came across, under the surface to a well on the other side, evidence of something happened. Then, but waste control got involved and then made them reline it and make it so that it didn't leak. And that was the irrigation pond. It was not this site. And I don't care how much one would believe that spot zoning is reasonable today. And I'm thinking of this site as it becomes more valuable as we build up our communities within throughout the metropolitan area in greater Minnesota. I think about how valuable this particular site is. And I can imagine that we put this, these examples of industry and we're doing a disgrace, if not in some ways polluting others. We certainly pollute that. I wish, in hindsight, that I had more to say when the scale building went in. Not because the scale offers a great community facility, but it's those shots of the police. And I can imagine that the Sand Hill Koreans that have been noted to be here, either they say, oh, that's somebody just shooting. We can clearly hear it up on the hill on the left beside this area. And I can imagine then, whatever the operation is that is brought and developed, I can imagine the kinds of pollution that we would experience and others would experience. Now, I'm not here because of me. I'm here because of you and you. So this spot zoning is unlawful, is inappropriate. And I take a memory of Cy Wolf, how many times we tried to invest our time wisely in development of agriculture. And I was a member of the metropolitan planning commission's road task force and how we identify and work with freestanding communities like Jordan. Jordan hasn't realized that they are very unique and they're still trying to be Bloomington. There's a great difference, as you no doubt know. So aside from my letter, which you have a copy of, and now you have this handout, I ask you very seriously, bring this or consider that what action you might take to affirm this change in zoning is to the detriment of the people that live there, the wildlife that have the area. When we went through the process of dealing with the first proposal on this at Sand Creek, Paul Pivus, Paul Nelson, wasn't able to imagine, as he said, well, they're not, I don't know if I don't point in the Minnesota River and, he said, yeah, but there's carver, there's shock and fee, there's, we'll make some explaining up to the state. We have a responsibility. We have a responsibility for helping each other. And not yours, because I can't imagine this, but it's for the sake of our children and their children. We need to be wise. We need to recognize what it is that we're talking about. Ms. Hensches, are you a member of the Hensches family?
I should have said something before. I don't hear my last name used too often. I don't run into it too often. I do not know the Hensches that have been mentioned in this meeting. No relation.
Okay, well, I just didn't know whether you would recuse yourself if...
I would recuse myself if I was related to them, but I'm not. I don't know who they are.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, do you have questions of me?
I do not.
Mr. Baldwin, do any of the board members have questions right now? We have your materials and thank you for your comments tonight.
Thank you for your time. And take care of yourself, be safe.
You too.
And be well. And I better sign in.
Yes, please.
There's only two of us that says here. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good evening.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Baldwin.
Forgive me, I want you to know that Tom is handicapped in being able to hear. And this further, what he's saying is, you can ask me whatever you want. I won't understand what you're saying. You can scream at me as loud as you want, it won't help. I don't care, okay? Piece of cake. This is going to be a quick and easy one. It works out.
Thank you very much.
There you go. Okay.
Thank you, Herb.
Hello, Commission members. I'm Tom Boncher. I'm a resident of Jordan, Minnesota. You're being asked to rezone not just the part of this property that is on the road. You're being asked to rezone the entire property. There's more to it than just what appears along the road front. The location in question has been studied in depth since about 2008. Reasons for not developing it remain the same now as then. First, the site is on the Sand Creek floodway. A floodway has the bed of a wetland or lake, the channel of a water course, and those portions of the adjoining flood plain, which are reasonably required to carry or store the base flood discharge. Given the flood history of this property, one may reasonably expect the property to flood and store flood discharge. If the flood discharge is not stored on this property, it must be stored someplace else. someplace else upstream, that is, on the flood plain in Jordan. And you attempt to mitigate flooding at the site of, at the site will force floodwaters upstream into Jordan. Two hundred Jordan properties are on the flood plain. They will be affected by backup floodwaters. The amended zoning ordinance, floodplain district, section seventy-one dash six dash two standards for floodway permitted uses presented earlier this evening states in part, in addition to the applicable standards outlined in section seventy-one dash five dash two, the use must have a low flood damage potential. The use must not involve structures. The use must not obstruct flood flows or increase velocities, stages, or flood damages as certified by a registered professional. Development that will change the course, current or cross-section of a protected wetland where public water is required to obtain a public works, public water works Second, industrial uses will require copious amounts of water that will lead to drawing down the water table and diminishing the ability of at least twenty-two existing residential wells to certain their homes. Third, wells drilled in the floodplain create an open path for floodwaters to the water table. The pressure used to force water up the well creates a negative pressure to draw water down the wellbar. Fourth, any commercial vehicle traffic would be running through an essentially residential neighborhood, or it will be accessing US one sixty-nine at a restricted intersection. We could see from experience with the revised access at the candy store, Red Rock Quarry, and other businesses along one sixty-nine, that merging traffic is dangerous. Fifth, contrary to what was written at the, up in the worksheet presented to the planning commission, support of the proposals from other jurisdictions is grudging at best. The response from Sand Creek Township states, the list of potential users of the properties requires our response to be in anticipation of potentially having traffic. The township cannot support the proposed amendment unless those items are addressed. It is also anticipated that should the applicants succeed with the proposed amendment, that each potential user property owner would be subjected to certain conditions and criteria for their specific business uses at the time of development. The response from the city of Jordan states, number one, the subject property is located partially within the city of Jordan's post twenty forty growth boundary. Within that area, it is proposed as a future residential land use, generally consistent with its current and neighboring use under largely unimproved conditions. This designation was viewed by the city of Jordan as a placeholder, however, recognizing that the area is not planned to be served by public sanitary sewer and water service in term. The city has discussed the idea of industrial use and is not opposed to it, however, conversations ceased after such a project became infeasible within city limits. I will point out here that the city of Jordan twenty forty comprehensive plan has been approved by the state of Minnesota, the Metropolitan Council, and Scott County. The response from the school district clearly states its concern regarding increased traffic near the juvenile alternative facility. Sixth, there is nothing about this property that makes it uniquely suited to an industrial commercial application. Other appropriately zoned property exists in this area. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Thank you very much for your comments. Would anyone else like to make comment at this time? See you, Norm.
I just wanted to add, there are some other letters that, that I believe should be coming during the course of the meeting. I know my husband sent one that wasn't in the list. And Mary Shank, the woman who owns the writing property, is also trying to write something to you. So I want you to know there are at least two more voices in this. Thank you.
Commissioner, I'd just like to add a few more things.
Please start your comments with your name.
Yep. Nick Bono. Carlson McCain.
Okay.
The issue of groundwater contamination came up with some of the questions, and I just wanted to kind of go back to the EIS for the mining operation that was proposed. The primary concern for groundwater contamination during that process was due to Sand Creek floodwaters inundating the site and the presence of about a hundred-foot-deep hole into the water table at that time. This project would involve no such hole in, in the floodplain. It would involve pretty standard stormwater ponds that would be out of the, the floodplain and would treat the water in a fairly typical fashion that would come off of the parking areas and the other impervious surfaces. So I just wanted to, to clear that up. And then about the traffic, the, some of the estimates for the mining operation were, you know, a hundred and, a hundred and ten round-trip loaded trucks per day, ten thousand loaded trucks per year. That this type of a development is going to have only a fraction of, of that amount. So I don't believe that that is going to be nearly as much of a concern as it would be for a, a gravel pit where the main business is import-export of, of material. Finally, I guess I just wanted to, to point out here, in terms of the area, I mean, we have a hundred-acre property that is, it does have some, some agricultural uses on it. However, the upland area here is very sandy and typically is planted with wheat. The lowland in the, in the floodplain does have corn at some, some years, but is often flooded out and is not a very well-producing farm. This property is located between a railroad, a freeway, and a wastewater treatment facility. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Paul.
Mr. Chairman. Nick, could you come back up?
Sure.
I totally, thank you. I totally agree with everything you just said. I'm very familiar with the site and the industry of mining and industrial. Question, when the public, um, meeting is closed, I may be making a motion. Is, are the applicants open for paving Valley View Road where the gravel part is?
I'm gonna maybe have Mark come up and, and speak to that as well.
Or another question I have, how long, how long of a distance is that gravel road that isn't paved?
So it's, it's about a quarter-mile from the end of the pavement, maybe a half-mile from the end of the pavement to the, the railroad crossing. Based on the county ordinance, we know that any approaches onto that stretch of Valley View Drive, if there's a driveway that enters Valley View, then it needs to be paved in that way. There are other configurations that could be done as far as, you know, some sort of a, a shared drive with a single entrance onto, onto Valley View. But, you know, that, we, we know that where there are driveways that enter onto Valley View, those would have to be paved, and we understand that moving forward. As far as, you know, formal commitment, I guess I'm not really authorized to make that, that call, but we're aware of all the, the applicable ordinances in terms of how you can have an approach onto a road from an industrial site.
Gotcha. I'll, I'll get some guidance from staff. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, it's a mile, it's a mile and a half.
Thank you for your clarification. Bill. Are there any comments from the public? Let's go from there right now. Any further comments that have not been made before? Okay. If you have additional comment, come up and make it.
Yes. Peggy, Peggy Donnet, and I just have the further insight from thirty-one years of, of, I mean, when you're on a horse, you see everything. And this whole area, it just floods completely every now and then. So it pulls all of whatever is in there, any, any ground, water, water stored there or anything, it's going to go right into Sand Creek. That's what it does. It's incredible.
Thank you.
Yeah. There was a berm here that got, that got broken by the, by the floodwater through the, through the field there. Absolutely, you, you just, the force of water is, is just really, literally awesome. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Did you have one additional comment?
I just wanted to encourage you to listen to detail. Yes, there was proposed with the gravel mine, a hundred and ten loads per day. Question is, it's a hundred and ten loads out. Whether it came in and then out, or it was out and then in, that's twice that number. Then I also want you to know that what we're talking about is so critical, and we have not the slightest idea who might be the owners of these five lots. So it's just a matter of perspective, making sure that we keep all things in balance.
Thank you. Mr. Walden.
Thank you.
Any further comments?
Mr. Chair, we've been monitoring the live streaming, and that gives the people an opportunity to email comments in to our planning email. And we've been monitoring that, and I got an update thirty seconds ago that we've had no comments.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Davis. This time I'll entertain a motion to close.
I'm going to say that my husband is unable...
Please, please start with your comment.
Peggy Donnet, my husband is, is unable to watch the, the, the stream on YouTube. So the fact that we haven't heard anything doesn't necessarily mean that people are able to follow what we're saying.
Okay. Thank you. At this time, I'll look for a motion to close public hearing.
So.
Motion by Commissioner Johnson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Robbie. I will call the, well, in this, Commissioner Henshaw?
Yes.
Commissioner Hartman?
Yes.
Commissioner Robbie?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Van Haag?
Yes.
Commissioner Watson?
Yes.
Public hearing is closed. At this time, I'll entertain discussion.
Mr. Chairman, I have three questions for Brad.
Okay. Commissioner Johnson, you have the floor.
Okay. Currently, it's zone urban business reserve, and I would like to know what that would allow them to do if they chose to be zone commercial, what would that allow them to be used other than industrial, briefly?
So, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Johnson, I'll answer the question, start answering the question this way and then get to the commercial. So today, the property is zone urban business reserve. I didn't itemize all of the uses that are permitted in that district. I only picked on this list what we see as the most common uses that are happening in the urban business reserve zoning districts or that we get requests for. And the most common use in that district is agriculture. And the reason for that is that this district is primarily over vacant land that is within a growth area and destined to be developed by city sewer and water for commercial uses. So today, most of the land is in agricultural use. In a few areas, in addition to that, we do have some feedlots on those agricultural parcels. You could operate a commercial nursery in the urban business reserve category. You can do government buildings and storage. Electric substations and transmission lines are common in our urban business reserve zoning areas. Farm equipment sales, I think just down in Belt Plain, we had a use like that. I don't know of any other part of the county where we have an active use in UVR. Mining is certainly a common use. The philosophy is that we want to get the gravel extracted out of those sites so that the inland use can ultimately be developed and then outdoor commercial recreation. So those are the common types of uses that could go in the ground today. Some of them generate different traffic, some of them generate different visual impacts. Those are uses that could happen today. On the right-hand side is some of the common uses that we have today in the rural industrial zoning, and so I just crosswalk them. So agriculture and feedlots, again, is a common use. Commercial nurseries are not allowed in the rural industrial zoning. If it was a commercial zone property, you could do a commercial nursery. You can do government buildings, you can do substations, you cannot do farm equipment sales. Mining is something that is allowed in, most of our non-residential zoning districts allow some form of mining, so that would be an allowed use in the rural industrial. So they're not doing this because of mining. They could apply for mining today, and they could apply for mining even if this land use changes. Commercial, outdoor commercial recreation is not allowed in the rural industrial, but if they did request to go to the commercial zoning district, they could do that type of use. Now on the list here, you start seeing uses that you cannot do in the urban business reserve, but you can do in the rural industrial, auto truck body and repair, community solar garden, contractor yard, indoor commercial recreation, mini storage, a lumberyard, manufacturing, warehousing, wholesaling, motor vehicle sales and service, and office. So those are the uses that are allowed if the land use changes. Now to go to your next question, what could they do if this was commercial?
Yes. Or move on to that. If it's a hundred acres, could they actually put a feedlot there?
Yeah, I believe they could.
What would that do with pollution?
Well, there would be a lot of citing requirements for the feedlot structure and the, and the animal containment areas and the manual management.
Okay. Okay. Go ahead.
You know, if, the one limitation might be that they're in the shoreline area, so that'd be, there could be a limitation on, on a feedlot, given its proximity in the shoreline area. So I'd have to explore that some more.
Okay. Now you're, the next thing you were going to say.
Yeah, I don't have a good list prepared to show you, so I just have to go off of memory, but if you move to a commercial zoning district, that's where you can start doing retail, commercial nurseries, auto repair. Oh, I might have to lean on someone in the hallway. Marty, you know the uses, can you provide the range of uses in a commercial zoning
Commissioner, I think what Brad was hitting on was mainly a lot more retail, a lot more customer-oriented businesses. We also allow office buildings, so you'd have office uses. In the commercial area, there tends to be a lot less outside storage than there is in the industrial area. It, it's more of a retail... It's more of a retail sales types of uses. So it's quite different than what you get in industrial area where we're looking at contract rehards.
Okay. My second question is, you have this. What happens if these people wanted to do the same application? Could they? Are they?
So, Commissioner, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Johnson, that is a really good question. In my opinion, this is a real policy question. I know it's been stated that this is a legal question, in my opinion, and in our attorney's office's opinion. It's not a legal question whether this is spot zoning. This is a policy question. Do you want to open up this stretch of Sand Creek Township for industrial uses? It's a discretionary decision. We can say no to this request fairly easily. It's harder to say no to a rezon. It's harder to say no to a plat. It's harder to say no to a conditional use permit, because we have criteria in the ordinance that makes it very clear that we have to have findings, and findings of fact, and criteria, so that we can justify why we're denying something. But a comprehensive plan amendment like this, you can say no. It doesn't seem right, and that's your reason, and that's the decision. So you have a lot of discretion. I want to make sure you know that. We don't feel it's a lawful issue that somehow you're going to violate any law, but I want you to know that if your answer is no, this is not the right place because of compatibility or whatever reason, that's enough reason to deny an application for a comp plan amendment. We have a lot of discretion. But to your point, Commissioner Johnson, it's a policy decision, and I would argue if we're going to support this change, it's going to be very difficult to tell the neighbors to the north that we're going to continue to hold them in an urban expansion area when between you and the city we feel allowed this type of use. So in my opinion, we're setting a precedent here for this corridor, and we would probably in the next comp plan amendment, or excuse me, the comp plan update in 2050, really consider this corridor no longer urban business reserve, because we've already decided this parcel should develop today. Why are we going to hold the other parcels north of here? And so we'd probably look at reguiding all of that candy cane striped area on the map to either industrial or our rural business reserve. That would be something 78 years from now that we would have to really talk about and decide if we're going to change this entire neighborhood.
Okay. And my third question, Mr. Chairman, is, on your staff recommendation, you said that staff is supportive of this planned use amendment as it is consistent with other proposed changes in the county's unincorporated area from urban business reserve to commercial or industrial when the adjacent city indicates that the extension of public sewer and water is 20-plus years into the future. Two of the public have said what we are doing is illegal, so that kind of puts us in a bind. It is not illegal? I just want to be sure, when you just spoke to something like this.
Yeah. Commissioner Johnson and the Chair, there has been public comment that this is going to be an illegal act, and it's going to meet the definition of the statute of spot zoning, from my opinion. And the attorney's office, who reviewed this, and the other comp plan amendments that we've done, we have been guided that this is not illegal, this is not spot zoning, that what we're doing is making a policy decision, that we're saying the parcel is not going to be served by city sewer and water in a timeframe that we thought was going to happen, and we developed the plan, and our policy is changing, and we're going to allow the property owner to develop the property with uses on septic and well. In all of these cases, the use was zoned for a non-residential use, some type of business use, and it was changed to either a commercial or industrial use when the land use changed. So it's our opinion that we're not changing the property from some residential area to a new commercial industrial area. We're holding an area that's being held for commercial use in the future. We're saying, let's allow it to develop today in a commercial industrial use. So it's a timing issue. To me, that's not spot zoning until the attorney's office, that's not spot zoning. So in all the amendments that we've done in the past, we have not felt like we violated a state statute on spot zoning, but we did make a policy decision, and that's certainly what you're being asked here to do today, is make a policy decision.
Thank you.
Other discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Watson.
Just for discussion, I know we're just going to, if we make the amendment and we advance this request to the county board for preliminary action, I'm not sure how this will all work out, but I'm still kind of, I'm still kind of clouding with regard to the township and its responsibility for the road infrastructure, or is it the responsibility of the developer for the land to put this in? I'm also looking at, Jordan, at this point, isn't ready to provide sanitary service or water service to that site. And if we go ahead and move this forward, at some point, these decisions, these questions will have to be answered. Are we premature here, or are we within the realm of responsibility to do this, and then at some point later go, well, who's going to take this responsibility, and who's going to have the financials as well? So my question, maybe you think about it, and the staff can answer that. I don't have a good feeling for that. But I'm a little nervous here with regard to proceeding with an approval for a change and then find out that we forgot to add in some financials, or the water sewer didn't quite work, or that type of thing.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Watson, I agree with you. I've been sitting here, listening to all this, and so many times we have conditional use permits and interim use permits that come before us, and we have rules we have to follow, and we make decisions based on those rules. I was gratified to hear that this is one where we can actually vote what we feel and decide whether or not we feel this is right. And I, for one, don't feel this is right. I don't think this should be passed. I don't think it's been well thought out enough. I don't think we know what the ramifications of passing this would be. I think that we put these plans in place, these community plans, or our general plans, and while this is not, I agree, it's not spot zoning, but boy, it feels like a close relative. I'm not comfortable with this at all. So I'm thrilled that I'm going to have a chance to finally vote with my heart on something instead of always having to follow the regulations.
Other commissioners want to weigh in?
Mr. Chairman. So Brad, regardless of the zoning, there's going to be possible buildings on these parcels, parking lots, drainage ponds, wells, septic systems, traffic, people working. So it's just a matter of what businesses you want to allow. And by opening it up, I think there's a tremendous demand for what they're trying to accomplish here. And it's not a gravel pit that they're opening up. It's just an opportunity for some businesses and a tax base for Sand Creek Township. Now, the question I have, though, Brad, I need, is this blacktopping, this blacktopping of the gravel. That's why I was asking earlier about the history of the Township Road, Sand Creek Township Road, just 300 or 400 yards north of this, and how that all went down, and who paid for it. And is it fair for this particular development to pay for all of the Township Road that needs to be blacktopped? Or is it to be shared with other owners on the road? So that's the hangup I have.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Hartman, that is a unresolved issue, and I think it was an issue that Commissioner Watson brought up too, that there still isn't clarity on what agreements are there between the applicant and the township to pave Valley View Road. And so we've heard from the applicant tonight, we've seen the letter from the township, but it is still unresolved. You could take the risk and hope that this does get resolved, and the land comes back for a rezon application or a plat. Or you could decide you don't want to take that risk, that until those assurances are found in black and white, you're not going to support a land use change. So that, again, is just a policy decision that we're asking you to make.
Okay. So question, Mr. Chair. So if we did vote on this, and let's say it did pass, we could do it without addressing the blacktopping on the Township Road, which could then be brought up again when they submit development plans?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Hartman, that's correct.
That's correct.
That's correct, that we would have to address it at the time of plat and rezon and a conditional use permit.
Thank you.
Other comments?
Mr. Chairman, so say this is denied as far as that, but he could still come back and then ask for commercial, correct?
Commissioner Johnson, if this is denied, the property owner still has rights, and those rights are based on the current zoning. And I have a list here of some of the uses that he has a right to do. And he could go through the process of applying for permits, as any property owner can under that zoning. So we're not denying any existing rights that the property owner has. He's asked, the property owner is asking for some additional development rights going to that new zoning district.
Other comments? I'll comment. I appreciate Mr. Davis bringing us back and focusing. This is a policy land use question, which this board looks years out, and the way that we zone and do land classifications is based upon looking at the big picture and the infrastructure that's there. And when we start looking at changing those land use classifications, to me, it's based on infrastructure that has changed in some way, or something has changed about it. We just looked at this property in the last couple of years and went through pretty extensive evaluation on a use, and looked at a lot of infrastructure around the property. Nothing has changed. And when I think of changing or changing the land use classification, I look at what has changed about, you know, when we look at it, we go, that's no longer appropriate because of this, this, and this. Outside force is changing it. In my mind, nothing's changed on this to make that happen. And when the city says, this isn't even in our, it's in our orderly annexation, but it's not on our radar right now, we could be 25, 30 years out. You just don't know on that. So then you're talking about, you know, not only the road infrastructure, but then also the water and sewer infrastructure, and all the things that support these kind of uses. So it's a little bit, to me, thinking about if things have changed, if the environment has changed some way, to go, oh, yeah, this just makes sense. Now, maybe at another time, this does make sense to us. Where we look at it, and we go, yeah, that makes sense for, if we look all the way up the freeway and say, all these areas are going to be, and then it's all right. So that's where I look at it. Are there any other comments? I'll entertain a motion on this matter before us at this time. Unless there's a dis... Just one comment.
Mr. Chairman, I'll go ahead. I support this land use amendment and further recommend advancing the request to the county board for preliminary action, noting the position of Sand Creek Township.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Johnson. I have a second by Commissioner Hartman. I will call the roll. We...
Mr. Chairman, clarification. We are voting then to pass this. Is that what?
That's what my motion is, based on the county.
Yes, that is the motion before us. Commissioner Henshaw?
No.
Commissioner Hartman?
Yes.
Commissioner Robbie?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Von Haas?
No.
Commissioner Watson?
No.
The motion does not pass. So we have six members this evening.
I want to ask if Ray Huber was still...
Yes, I can, I can see. Commissioner Huber?
Yeah, I don't think we have him anymore.
I don't, he has, but...
Is he watching on YouTube?
All right. Well, in all cases, a 3-3 tie means the motion doesn't pass, and so that's what we have. We have a, we don't have approval. And that's what we'll forward to the board.
So that will go forward as the recommendation of the board, that this was the action taken?
Yep.
And, okay. I would like to thank all of the people who came this evening, and the applicant, in offering all the information that has been offered. I'd like to thank staff, and also the commissioners for their insight on this as well. And so this will go forward as staff has explained to the board with a split recommendation, and no action, no approval.
Yep. No approval.
Okay. Very good.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And our next item, our final item, is the planning manager update, and I'll have Mr. Davis, who's at the podium, now present that first.
All right. Mr. Chair, just a few items that the county board took action on based on your recommendations. November 17, the county board did approve the request for rezoning of 68 acres. That's UE, from UER to UERC. James Klein was, Klein was the applicant property owner. That was in section 33 of New Market Township. Earlier this month, on December 3, the board did approve the preliminary and final plat of Endeavor, consisting of two lots and one other lot, in 34 acres. The applicant there was Eric Carlson, section 13 of New Market Township. They also approved the request for a conditional use permit for the sales office showroom and assembly of boatlifts, docks, and cannibes. That was Brick's Boat Works in Louisville Township. So those are the actions that have been approved by the board. Tomorrow on the agenda will be the reappointment of all advisory commission members. I'm pleased to let everyone know that all of you are up for another year of duty on this planning commission and board of adjustment, so I appreciate that. It will be formal tomorrow. That means you will all return in January, and we get to do this over again, and we get to elect a chair and vice chair and recording secretary for the two bodies, so that's the planning commission and the board of adjustment. So keep that in mind. We'll send out a reminder, and in January, you can decide the different offices. Next year, we'll bring some changes. We hope we're getting closer to the end of this change, where some of you are in the room and some of you are not. I apologize to Liam, part of our technology wasn't working, we had to bring you up. I appreciate you doing that. We'll try to fix that in January.
I feel like I'm part of the varsity again.
Hopefully, we'll have to do that real soon. But once we get back to normal, we'll be in another quandary, and that is, this building is going to get fully renovated, and all of us that work here and meet here are going to have to vacate this building starting in either March or April. And they're going to drop all the ceilings and redo the HVAC and some of the sprinklers in this building. And so a lot of staff will be relocating to the new building that we've seen go up for several months while work gets done here, and then we'll move back into this building. Our office at planning and zoning will move from the first floor, where you met it down during these meetings, we're all moving to the third floor once the renovations are done.
Where will the hearings be?
So that's why I'm bringing it up. So this room will be shuttered, and we're going to have to find a new home for these meetings. And...
And the board is looking at rotating their Tuesday morning board meetings at different city halls, so they're going to try to go to all seven cities and just meet at their city halls. We're not proposing that so much. We'd like to just find one location, because when we send out hearing notices, and we have township officials, it'd be good just to have one place for next year, so people know to keep going back to that place. So we're going to have to find a home from about April through next December. Wow. So we're looking at maybe... One idea that I have is maybe Spring Lake Town Hall, which is pretty nicely centrally located for most of the people that come to these hearings. It's a shorter drive in here for a lot of people. Maybe it's more convenient for all of you. It's a nice room, has a lot of... A lot of room. The downside is we will lose some of our technology. We may not be able to stream it on YouTube and record it. We'll be able to audio record it, but we wouldn't be able to video record it. So that's one downside that we're looking at. But if that doesn't pan out, then we would look at probably going to the city hall chambers, maybe Shakopee, or either Shakopee Prior Lake or Savage, I guess are the ones that we've kind of thought about. I know you're familiar with the Savage place, but otherwise, maybe you got some ideas.
Can we zoom? Could we zoom also if, let's say, if I'm aboard?
I think we would always want to have that availability, even if we're past the pandemic. We'd still like to have that availability for people if they're not...
That's good.
So I'm just letting you know, I'm not looking for any decisions, but just wanted to give you a heads up that there'll be that disruption starting in the spring. That's all I have for an update.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Entertain a motion to adjourn?
Wait, Brad. Helicopter, did that change the number of trips? Do you remember?
No. I had to make sure. Yeah, it's still... It stayed with 50.
So it stayed at basically the same conditions that we had?
Yes. Was there any change?
Did they change the flight pattern?
Did they eliminate one?
Yeah, that's the only thing that changed.
So they didn't eliminate the north flight path, but they, remember, late at the second hearing, they introduced that northeast flight path to move the flight path further away from that Hunter's Crest development, which we had a lot of comments from, and the board did recommend that they follow that northeast flight path, not the north flight path. So that was really the only change that was made, and it was approved 5-0.
Did the county board open up a public hearing at it at all, or take any public comment on it?
There was one member of the public that was here, and they did allow him to speak, yes. So, but it was... They didn't have the representation from the public like you folks did.
I've only heard of him twice.
Really? I haven't heard him at all.
Did he apply for a permit to put up the building?
Yes. So probably a couple days after the board action, which was November 3rd, a permit was issued for the hangar structure. So that's more than likely under construction nearing completion at this point. He has not provided me a copy of the MINDOT license for the private helipad yet. They are completing that, and then also getting FAA approval on the flight path. But they anticipate that to come soon, too.
Sure.
Good deal.
Hear horses here when he flies over?
No, I heard them. I was in the garage.
Okay, but the horses weren't out, or...
Yeah, so I went out and looked. So he must come around when he comes in, because I'm north, almost directly north of it.
You're straight north.
I'm straight north, and he must come in around the west to come in, to do kind of a loop. So I've just seen him twice, and it was kind of odd, because, you know...
Are you keeping track?
I don't know. I mean, it's like you're in the garage, and you hear this, you go, hey, what's that?
It's not mosquito, so it's not...
Yeah. No, not at all.
Was it very disturbing at all, or...
Not disturbing, I mean, it's just, it's a helicopter going over.
You hear it.
You hear it, yeah, it's just like anything else.
It's gone within seconds.
Usually, when you hear it, you think it's mosquito control or something coming by, so you go and you look.
Or med vac.
Med vac, yeah.
When they're up in the sky at their traveling rate, it's like a plane going over. It's just kind of when they're going up and down that it gets very bad.
Yeah, when they're coming in a little bit lower, and that's when they're like, you hear the mosquito control ones, because they come in much lower, and then you hear them. But it's not, it was, you know, it's literally just flying over. So, no, the horses, I didn't notice any response, but... Okay, very good. We are adjourned.